Good evening. It is Wednesday, August 28th, and I call the Maple Plains City Council's special meeting to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I'm looking for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I would like to add, under New Business, an item for snowplow contracts.
Okay.
And I'll make the motion to approve with that addition.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with the addition of snowplow contracts under New Business. Looking for a second on that?
Second.
Second by Faye. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next item of business is visitors to be heard, seen none, we will move on. New Business, review veterans memorial park bids, and I'm going to turn that over to all of our wonderful staff and engineers.
All right. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm going to do minimal talking and leave it to the experts here. But, no, just kind of a recap. I think I might just go over kind of the broad stroke of it and where I'm sitting at and more of the details the engineers can get into. We went in on Tuesday at 11:00 a.m., we had a bid opening. We received three bids, and I believe the engineer's estimate was about $440,000. If that's correct, Alan?
Yep.
And unfortunately, sometimes this happens, we received a low bid from Meyer Contracting, and their bid was about $140,000, $148,000 above what the engineer's estimate was. And just kind of, this happens. This is actually, this does happen. Where if, right now, if things are, things are busy and people are working and there's not a whole lot of people that aren't working, sometimes contractors can come in and say, "Hey, we'll do it," but they charge a hefty premium. And so I understand that right now, too, it's, there's a lot of people working on a lot of projects, and so maybe that's the reason why we only received a few bids. I would say that, in good conscience, I can't recommend moving forward with the low bid here to City Council. Just because I do think that, I do think that there's a time to look at bidding this out, maybe in January or in the winter time, and getting a better bid there. So that's, that's just what I want to start off with. If you guys have questions, I'm going to run and hide and direct them towards the engineers. But that's just kind of an overview of what I see. I just want to make sure Council isn't, this, I know it's alarming because it's, wow, these numbers are a lot different than what we had estimated from engineers. For me, when I look at that, I don't think that's an engineering error or any type of deal like that. I think it's, I think it's more of just kind of the climate of work that is going on right now with contractors that really dictate these prices, so.
So just for the viewing audience, if anyone does watch this later, so we did receive three bids. I'm just going to round them up because it's easier. $589,000 from Meyer, $625,000 from Custom, and $814,000 from Blackstone, just so people are aware of what we're talking about. And as staff mentioned, we were estimating, hoping for $440,000 or less, so the substantial difference. So I'm going to let the engineer speak if you guys have anything and then create a question.
And I can just start out, when I look back at our history here, I mean, since I've been working as city engineer in Maple Plain, there was one time where we had a bid.
Oh, yeah, that's, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
There's one time when we had a bid where it came in a lot higher than what was estimated. It was when we were looking, the one that I can remember is some of the forest main work when we were looking to run forest main out to the west side of town and replacing, you know, the initial bid came in high and, and we, it was, I think, at that time, I got to look back, but whenever we seemed like we bid something this time of year, sometimes it works out good and we get prices that are matching kind of what we estimate, and sometimes we get these prices that are, are this much higher. And I know Alan has talked a little bit with other people in our office, too, and got some background, but we, we have been seeing recently, this year, some of these prices coming in higher than what our estimates are. And, and I think that's something where, when you bid it in the summer, you just don't, you don't know as an engineer, okay, are these prices coming in higher because that's the new norm in construction? That this is what we're going to see next year or the following year? Or is it, or is it just because people have been busy? And, you know, there's some people that were plan holders that we know that bid this work, that didn't bid it. So are we, are we missing that one good bid that would be, you know, closer to our estimate? Or are we seeing prices increasing? So with that, I'll turn it over to Alan. I know Alan's been doing a lot of legwork and looking through this, and he can add, make sure we speak in.
Right, right.
You've got someone.
Oh, you got my own here. Well, I was going to share.
Thanks, Dan. As Dan mentioned, you know, sometimes this does happen. We did every attempt, we had an addendum actually, to extend some of the completion dates. I spoke with some of the contractors and asked them before we posted the addendums about when, you know, how are they feeling about the project, what do they feel about the completion dates? And one of the things we did was actually, we originally had the concrete work to be completed this year, and based on some of the comments we received, we changed the completion date for the concrete to next year at the final completion of the project in an attempt to try to get better bids, because he was saying that this year, they were having problems even receiving bids, or some of the bids were extremely high. So we did move the completion date for the concrete till next year. The only thing we had this year was the clearing, the grading, and some of the foundation work for the stage. Everything else, and temporary stabilization, everything else was supposed to be done next year. A contractor could have done that this year, so it was open. If they wanted to do it, they could have finished the project this year. There would have been time to do it, but we left it so where they had an opportunity to do it next year. That was just based on some of the comments we received from them. So, yeah, I mean, that's kind of where we're at.
Yeah, so I think, I think what, when Alan and I talked about, you know, what are, because we, as, you know, we allow the city to make a decision, but we can just, you know, it doesn't feel good when you get these prices to proceed. I mean, we understand why, you know, the city administrator would say not recommending proceeding. And we just think about, okay, what are, what are some things that can be done, you know, if it's bid in January, February, that can make this more, make some adjustments? And a lot of the times, there's, you know, some alternates that we can, I mean, is it something where this colored concrete needs to be, you know, just standard concrete? And, and there are some options that are, LA say that you could go and, you know, what is it?
So.
Sandblast the concrete. So it actually still looks different, but it's not as expensive as colored concrete.
So there was a couple of things that stood out from the bids when I was receiving, you know, looked at the numbers. The big one in particular was some of the stonework. Now, the stone, our landscape architect works directly with those suppliers on many projects. And we use those projects that were just bid this spring as, as examples, for example, bidding prices. And he actually got the, the material cost alone, just for the stonework, was around $20,000, plus or minus. That was just some material costs. And he, based on previous bids, and, you know, he looked at, it was estimated somewhere between, you know, $40,000 or so. That's what it was supposed to cost for the.
Can I interrupt you? When you say stonework, are you talking about the benches as well as the limestone?
Every, all the stone, it was all coming from the same manufacturer. There's two, there's two guys that do it out of Wisconsin. So anything that's stone-related, so it'd be the, the columns in the stage, the monument sign, the benches, the veterans memorial. So those, just the material price alone was $20,000. And he, based on previous projects, it was estimated somewhere around $40,000 or so to get it done. The bid price for the stone came in at $83,000. So it's hard, we, I mean, we do the best we can to try to compare prices, but, you know, it's hard when you have something come in at double than what it should have been. And we're, numbers are, and our numbers are conservative. It's, it's hard to stay accurate. And, and like Dan said, we don't know if this is a new norm or if this is just because of when, you know, people are busy. I mean, you got historic unemployment rates, low unemployment rates, so it's hard to estimate. So we had, the stone was one, was the big one. Sidewalk, the concrete work, that came in around $20,000 over our engineer's estimates. And I'm using healthy numbers, and when you get a price at $50, $50 a square foot for concrete on some areas, you're like, I don't, how can I even guess that? And then, you know, our estimated, we have handform curb work that all day long on projects I've done, it hasn't changed. It's about $35 a foot for handform curb around the playground. That stuff came in at $60 a foot. So it's like, you know, we can't, it's, it's really the concrete, you know, is one big one, the stone, and then also the stage. We used all our, it's just standard foundations and formwork. It's nothing fancy. It's, it's a smaller bit, you know, stage that came in at approximately $50,000 over our estimate. And those are based on, you know, projects, they're recent projects that we've completed within the last six months to a year. All, all around the metro, not just, you know, you know, right here. So we used lots of projects, and for those reasons, those are the main ones. Everything else came in right at, right, right where it's supposed to be. It was really the concrete, the stone, and, you know, the concrete and the stone.
So, so I mean, one of that, I mean, we know from, I mean, we've had some discussions with the DNR because, you know, there is that grant money, and they do, they do, we kind of explained, hey, we got the bids back. And those came in, you know, a lot higher than estimated. And they did, I mean, did discuss with Alan that, I mean, they do work with communities. They kind of, they, they want you to, you know, they, they know that we have a shelter, or I mean, a stage. They know that we have, like, some, some amount of playground.
So I called, it's my name, she's the grant specialist. She was the one who worked with us on our grant. And I asked her, you know, I was concerned about, number one, the high prices, but, you know, I said, basically, this project is above the budget for the city. And we want to stay within the, within the, what do you call it, the requirements of the grant, parameters of the grant. We want to stay within those parameters, but then still be able to deliver a project to the city that was, you know, that for the residents and everybody is expecting. And they basically said, in our proposal, we propose a new shelter, we have a playground, walkways and landscaping. And there's no, she basically said there's no dedicated dollar.
Like buckets, there's like.
There's buckets. She called it like buckets. So we, she said, we have to have this, and, and if you have X dollars for one thing, you could maybe, you can move some of those dollars to another item. So for example, if we wanted to reduce the scope on a certain item, we could do that. And we want to make sure that we check that with them. But we could potentially reduce the scope on one item and move that money that we would have spent on that item to another item. So.
So potentially, we could reduce from the three-tiered playground.
That's exactly what, that's exactly what me and Dan discussed actually before this meeting, where we could, there's three-tiered playgrounds. There's one that's on the far northern one that doesn't have the sidewalk around it. You could easily pull that off without any redesign or no redesign, and it would just literally be a click delete on it. And you could take those costs and push it towards the, the ban, the ban shelter. So it'd be an option, and you still have the playground. It wouldn't have to be, let's say you have two jungle gyms and a swing set. You could have a jungle gym and a swing set. You don't have, you know, no one says it has to be one or the other. But that, that's definitely an option to, if, and that's only, I think, we would look at if we think these are the new norm bidding prices. And I have a list of alternates that I've kind of preliminary put together, and I want to, we want to review them later, you know, once we kind of iron them out and make sure. But just to, and with the, using this high, high number and those alternates, I think we can still get down to that, to the budget without removing the playground. But if the playground, if these are the new norms, then that may have to come into discussion anyway. And that, and it could, the project could easily be set up that way to not, as an alternate.
Right, keep it as an alternate, then you see how the prices come, so that you can still, you know, like here, we don't have these alternates, so it's like, okay, we've got to reject the bids and rebid. But then when we rebid it in the winter time, it's like, okay, here's the base bid, which we've kind of talked about at different times. The base bid, here's these alternates, and still have the base bid kind of meeting the requirements of the DNR, so you get that funding, but, okay, do we maybe have to take out the, and we'll get into more details with Bobby and Mark and, and staff discussions and then bring it to the council. But like, the nice decorative columns that we had on the shelter, do we, do we have to keep that as an alternate? See where the prices come in, when, when we maybe get more people? Because I, I just think about it with contractors, they're still, you know, we, we gave more time, and it's stuff that, okay, you can do this work next year, but they're, we just seen them, they, they are very busy this year. And so I, I just know there's people that pull plans, that think of a bid, and some of those were low bidders on projects that were bid earlier this year. So I, you know, we can never say if this is the new norm, but it just seems to me like bidding in January, December is what, or, excuse me, January, February is kind of the, the answer here to keep moving and, and get some better pricing.
And if we wait for the winter bidding, which, you know, is what we're going to do, what is the timing on the grant?
So the grant is good till December 31st, 2021.
Okay.
Yep, so we're, so we're covered, and we can, if we would, if that's one of the recommendations, if we were to, we can't, talking to some of the contractors, simply moving the date, the bid date from, let's just say we took the same project, we bid exactly, how we have it, bidding it in January, February, and have a completion date in early fall, like, let's say Labor Day weekend, for example. That would not alone be enough, that, he, I asked, I asked him, would that change? He's like, a little bit, but not much, not enough to get you down to your budget.
At least the one contractor that you talked to.
I, I work with Blackstone on multiple, I've worked with them on three other projects on the west metro. I trust them, I, I, I have a good relationship with them, and they are actually the highest guy. And he's like, he's like, we're busy. And as we said, he's like, I couldn't even come here till November if I wanted to. But he wanted to bid it because he, it's right, they're out of.
Loretto.
Loretto, so I mean, they're, they're local. So I'd still love, I told him I'd call him again. I kind of told him what we do, and he said, yeah, I'd love to look at it again. I mean, they want to do it. And so, yeah, I mean, and one of the reasons why we didn't offer the alternates this time was because we were within that, our, we had the feasibility estimate. When I did my engineer's estimate, it was, I didn't even look at that. I did it separate, so we still came similar numbers. And however, I wasn't involved at that point in time, but I did my own kind of separate estimate based on preview, other projects in, for example, the 2018 Maple, Maple Plain reconstruction project. We had sidewalk and, you know, seating and, you know, all those standard items. And then we do a lot of this, we just completed a veterans project in Chaska, so I use those to help look at some of the stonework. You know, and then other, you know, basically just other communities around the area to get our estimates. And when we do those, we, we usually run right in the middle of the road. We'd like to be bid on number two or three.
Yeah, we never want to be low bidder. You don't want engineers building your park.
Right.
I mean, some of us.
So we're right, I mean, we're right in the middle, and that's, that's how we, so when I did it independently, it was, you know, it still fell in line with what our, the feasibility stuff was, so.
Do you expect we'll get more bids by bidding in the winter as well?
I'd like to think so, but you can't, like, it's all.
Yeah, you never really know, but.
I mean, our last, I mean, we, I mean, we did have good interest in our, I mean, our street utility projects that were bid the last few years, where we had, I forget, what did we have on our?
I think we had like nine or 10.
Yeah, it was a very good interest. I think it, somewhat, and it seems like when they're bidding, and, you know, do you want to, there's all this strategy. Do you want to bid like in early February? Because maybe there's some of these projects that are bid in January, and then they don't get the bid. And then there's like, oh, they're a little eager. But usually, January, February, we shoot for that.
That's why we have you guys.
Well, I mean, and I don't know, you, you can hear from one contractor, doesn't matter, another will say. But I just know as they start being second low on bids, they seem like they get a little more eager because they, they got people coming up starting in April that are going to, their crews are coming back, and we got to have work to get going. So, yeah, it's, it's.
I think some of the next steps that staff and what we need to work on is, we need to focus on for our upcoming workshop. Staff wants to lay out different options for moving forward. I think Dan's hit it right on the head that going out for a bid again in March or, or in January or February is probably, that would be the recommended path from staff, probably. But again, at the same time, maybe looking at having it where we get creative a little bit with the bid package, too, in terms of having different options for contractors, to see if that helps. I do think that if you go out in January, February, you will have more contractors. I just, I, that's usually when everyone's gearing up. I think part of the reason why you have fewer contractors, too, is just everyone's really busy in the middle of the summer working, and they're spending less time focused on additional work right now, so.
I have a question. If you have a, if you write this up such that there is a bid package A, and then you have alternate bid B, C, and D. And I think that's what you're talking about, breaking this up. Is it possible to, to let the, the, the project to company A to do the base bid and to do B, C, and D with another company because they were lower? Or does it have, does it have to be let as a package?
You, if you wanted to do it that way, you'd almost have to have, you'd have to bid it as separate, separate projects or whatever. You'd have to say, you could, and, and with this, this, I don't, I just actually just finished a project like that, like you're speaking of, but it was a considerably larger project, just a project with a size. I just don't, I don't know if you're going to capture that, that benefit. You're really, you're going to have a guy come in, you're going to have a, basically, this project will have three subs. You're going to have, someone may do the site grading and some clearing and the earthwork and maybe some of the concrete. But then you're going to have, they have to have a stone guy. Like, a lot of those stone guys don't do that. For example, like Blackstone, they do all the stone stuff, and then they sub out their concrete work. But then Meyer would do, they, I don't know if they, I don't think they do concrete, but they would do the site work, like, they would do the utilities, the grading, and maybe the aggregate base or whatever. And then they would have a concrete company come in and do the concrete. And then they'd have the stone people come in. So you really, this project is, you're still going to have a minimum of two, probably three contractors out there, or four, depending on, you know.
It's the same thing you do with like a street reconstruction project. And I'll say you give it to, I know Northdale, who used here, they're, they're good with the underground, you know, the water and the sewer pipe work. But when it came to like the street and, and curb work and blacktop work, that was all subcontracted out. And they were the contractor and just subbed out that work because that wasn't their specialty. Same thing on a project like this.
And there's, there's a few contractors, like Ryan, remember Ryan who worked on Bud? They were ones that did the sewer, the water, the curb and gutter. I think they.
They don't pave. The only thing they don't do is pave. And there's no, there's no beduminus on this project. There's a small patch. So that's, they would do that by hand.
I mean, so there, there's probably some out there that might do a few more things. But, yeah, if you're going to, I mean, one of the things we do with alternates is we make, you know, like, sometimes you can set up two ways. You can set up the base bid, and then these alternates are part of B, C, and D. And you can say, well, we're going to award it on, you know, whoever's the low base bid bidder. But then in that situation, and people sometimes on part A, B, and C, and D don't hit, you know, because they say, well, I want to be low. I don't care about B, C, and D. So we always set it up where, historically in the city, is, it's the base bid and any of those alternates that the city decides to go with. So, so they're, they're spending their time, and we, you know, putting prices on those alternates to be able to give us good pricing and.
Well, I like your question. I just think for consistency, for timing, for communication, whether the project.
So we're, we're proposing, and we'll iron out the details, but we're proposing to have, basically bid the project as it sits right now. Again, and, but one advantage to doing it next year, we want to, we have some money, not a significant amount. There's somebody in temporary stabilization, we won't. So that's gone, so we'll, so we will save that, but there may be, there may be some additional pricing just because it's the next year, it's another year. But anyway, so you'll save that, but then we're all, we're proposing to do deduct. So basically, if you're, if that comes in higher, you start, okay, we'll switch, we'll get a, we'll, we'll switch from colored concrete to a standard concrete, and then you could save $15,000, or whatever the number is. And then, and then if, hopefully, you can pick, like Dan said, pick the, the deducts as you see fit, and, and, and we can hit the number, so we're, we don't, so for sure, it's going to go, and it's within the budget.
Yeah.
And I just think, really, we don't know what's going to come out in January and February. I do think you're going to get more competitive bids than this. I think you'll get more contractors, and then, then we'll be able to start deciding where we're at. If we're in good shape, or if we need to look at deducts and go from there.
These contractors must be busy in the fall because the reason we steered this to bid late summer was because it was a broken schedule. You know, they could do work in the fall.
Yep.
And they could finish it first thing in the spring. And that was, that sounded very appealing to me. But obviously, they're just busy in the fall. They may not be busy in the spring, we don't know. But they're, they're busy enough in the fall where they did not even get close to engineer's estimates.
Correct.
So we're banking now on the fact that they need work as soon as road restrictions come off.
Yep. Right.
And it's always that, that thing, when you bid in the summer, you just never, and you, and you get a bid that this, that is this high, you kind of say, okay, yeah, we rebid it in January, February, that, you know, we should have more bidders, the bids should come in less. But if, if it comes in at like, you know, five hundred, yeah, 500,000, we kind of know, but at least we'll have alternates that you can knock some stuff down.
And will all the alternates include the playground and electric? Will, will it be a complete package, even though it'll be broken into a series of subsets? Will it be, because this was just, this didn't include playground, and this didn't include any electric. This just was earthwork.
Concrete.
Concrete, veterans memorial, ban shell.
And that, we wouldn't change that. The electrical would still, is as proposed, was that design build that the planner was going to work with, and then also the playground was also separate? Because that's, there's, there's, playgrounds are, there's people who do that, and they do it very well.
Okay, that, that's fine. But then if Bobby handles that, I just want to, all I'm trying to say is, if you work the same angle you're working, and at the same time Bobby is working on local electrical contractors and playground manufacturers or installers or whatever, so that when the bid package comes, we're looking at the whole picture instead of just one component of it and not knowing where the other two-thirds of it is. Is that fair? Can I, can I, you know, without dropping you an email to remind you, can, can we, can we run that as a tandem?
Yeah, no, that's, that's the idea. Obviously, like I said, we're going to try and, we've got a budget, and we know what that budget is, and we laid that out in the previous meeting. I mean, we're, we're working on it right now to get that electrical component, and with the playground, too. The only hesitancy I have with the playground, too, is just cautiously waiting on, my only concern is that, let's say you go out for bid in January or February, and the bids are still really high. Like Alan and Dan were talking about, you know, with our grant that we have, we might be able to move pools of money. So we could look at, all right, do we want to shrink down the playground and move that towards more of, you know, the ban shell or something along those lines, or the veterans memorial component? Oh, that's not part of the grant, I'm sorry, the ban shell. And if you do that, then, then you're going to have a very different playground than, than what you originally started with.
Well, but I'm, from a city council standpoint, Bobby, what I'm trying to avoid is, let's say, this first phase of this comes in, and we do let it in February. And everything is fine and dandy, we're all happy. And then, a month later, we start getting electric bids and playground bids that are astronomical. It kind of ruins what we just completed.
No, I, I get to there. I think we'll have a full scope of picture by then.
All right.
Not worried about that.
Are there any other specific questions? Obviously, we'll go into more detail on the ninth, but just want to make sure everyone was on the same page going forward. Well, thank you to our engineers for your hard work and creativity.
We always like coming in where we're like second or third.
I would have loved to come here tonight and said, this thing came in at 395,000, and we're good to go. And I would, I would have loved to do that. And like I said, it's.
So it's not.
I'm frustrated as some, I'm sure some of you guys are, it's not, like I said, it's not.
It's not the fun part.
I was frustrated. John sent me the bid, I was, I was.
Yeah, it was nice that John was there.
Happy, you know, when I saw that. As soon as I read the first one, I was like, I started shaking my head because I, I knew right away that it wasn't.
Well, and it is disappointing, but we just need to stay positive and go out in January, February, and, you know, hope for more competitive pricing and more bids, and that the numbers will be in our favor and the timing. And unfortunately, it's what it is.
And we're, we're, we're with everybody as far as what your, what the vision is of the, the city and the council. If there's certain things that are a must haves and some of them are needs and wants, I guess, is what we're, we'll, you know.
I think Bobby's already set aside time on the ninth at the workshop, and we can go more into.
On the ninth, will we see the itemized breakdown?
Yeah, I can, I can send that out via email. Yeah, I can get those from Alan.
Versus just the bid package price?
Yeah, it's fine. We can definitely send that out to all of council and go from there. I don't, I don't know if we're going to have a, I think Alan summed it up pretty well, going over what he thought was high. We'll go from there and move forward, so.
That's a no, or that's a yes?
That's a yes.
Okay.
Do you need us to officially reject the bids tonight?
Yeah, do you need a motion for that, or?
I don't think it would hurt.
I, I think you do because you got to give them their bid, you got to give them their bid security back, right?
I mean, you have like 60 days, but I, I don't think there's any reason to delay unless you felt you wanted to discuss them more.
I don't think there's more to discuss.
Because there's nothing we can change at this point.
It's not recommended, we're not changing.
I, yeah, I wouldn't recommend to council that we, we don't accept any of the bids here tonight.
Right, so looking for a motion that we do not accept any of the bids for veterans memorial park.
So moved?
Moved by Cahill?
Second.
Second.
Second by Delong. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you again, Dan and Alan.
Thanks. Lot of hard work.
Next item of business, um, council member Cahill added snowplow contracts.
Um, I just wanted an update since weather's turning cold and it's September next week, so. Wanna make sure we don't end up in November without snowplowers.
No, 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 no. I, I plan to have, uh, something in front of city council, hopefully by the end of September. Um, but I've already reached out. I've talked to, today I talked to two more. I met with a different one last week. And, um, really all I have to do at this point is put together a, a, our city map, and then pretty much just color in what roads and sidewalks are the responsibility. And then give them to those contractors, and then I'll just start receiving bids, um, from there, and, and we'll go from there, so.
Realistically, how many bids do you think we'll see?
I think, I think for sure we'll see at least three. It could be up to five.
Okay. And we're asking all of our local people as well?
All of our local people, yep.
Have you put a, are, are you just talking to them, or are they all looking at this the same way?
They're all gonna look at it the same way.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, what I heard is right now he's talking, and then he's gonna put together something and send it.
Correct.
Anything by September, the end of our September?
That's what I'm hoping for. It'll depend on how fast they get back to me, but, um, I'm thinking, so my only concern is with my first meeting I had. Uh, with a company around here is that there's a, uh, salt shortage already going into this year. It was a major concern about salt. Have you heard about?
Didn't we have to give a bunch back last year?
Um, so. And I've talked to some of these contractors, and I'm like, well, you know, sand, cuz I know we've talked about using sand, and, uh, some of them are absolutely, no. Sand is not nearly as effective. Um, the vast majority of cities are moving away from sand and going to salt. And, um, I'm like, this is what I was told to, I saw, not saying it's fact.
The watershed.
Yeah.
Cause I'd like to get those two people at the same table.
Everywhere else, where they're actually going the other way. They're, they're, they're trying to minimize the use of salt, so I don't.
I get it. I'm just saying, uh, you know, so some of the bids, I'll, I'll make sure I specify for council if they use salt or, um, only, or if they do use sand components as well.
A combination of the two, salt and sand.
Correct, so.
Good. All right, so then we can plan on the September twenty-third meeting, that we'll see at least three bids for plowing or more maybe.
Sounds good.
All right, um, are there any council reports or other business? All right, then I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by council member Fay.
Second.
Second by council member Cahill. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The meeting's adjourned at six oh seven.
Thanks, guys.
So we gotta, I gotta listen to some more of the.